Everybody's had a chance to read the minutes.
They're pretty long.
They are pretty long. I don't know that I saw any directions or anything. Anyone else? I'm actually feeling pretty impressed with me. I'll go in.
Run, move, take.
I want to play with it.
All right.
If you may just, before we see much minutes, um, I did think about it to this morning. We had a call meeting since our last official meeting. We need to make sure that is brought up, not brought up, but the minutes were presented.
They're in, I believe in your, probably the same, that was the, the call meeting was...
It was for executive session.
Yeah, it's in the phone number, I just didn't say it. So he's, uh, he's done.
Just need to make note that we did have executive session at the call meeting.
All right, what is, how is that out for now?
Do we, do you have the copy tonight, if you're definitely racing up in the country? I just put it in the signs, is it?
You find, one of these signs just says, we called it over and we had executive session. Cause you need, next time just put it in the package, cause that's all it says, because the other, others closed.
Okay. I'll remember that, and we'll have to, same Sanders, Chamber, gonna speak to us on the tourism project.
That, some other thing. Uh, on the tourism part, uh, I just want to bring you up today on a couple of things. One thing that, uh, we have a Georgia Tourism, State Tourism Resource Team. That is going to be coming soon later. Uh, there'll be nine people on the team that'll be coming in here, uh, Wednesday after, right after lunch. Uh, they'll be here on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the Thursday afternoon. Uh, this is, uh...
And that's what, what day today is?
Uh, this will be the week, the end of the week after Thanksgiving, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. They're actually doing the same thing in Homable, in Kings County for three days, two and a half days. Uh, but this is something that, uh, had to work on here for about a year or longer to get them here. It's very important, uh, for us for the future of developing a tourism project, what, what we need, what we're, what we're doing here. And this is about a forty thousand dollar investment by the state into doing this. They come back to, uh, the plans that I've seen, that they've been over the counties. They come back with very good planning for the, for the community. And it is put together, uh, what we'll be doing that, during that time is doing tours of Lakeland and tours of the new camp. Uh, not all the historical spots, but just places around the county and everything, you know, the river, the, the banks, lake, burnt church, just all kinds of places in the county where including on that tour. There will be a dinner, there will be a reception, a community reception at the end of the time. And I'm gonna get to, uh, complete the agenda as we can complete as to each day of this, that we'd like very much for you to be a part of. On November the twenty-ninth, the second day, there will be interviews with local citizens and officials on Colapal Territory Downtown, agritourism, natural resources, just all kinds of things. This is a, a very, uh, small section of our community. Uh, Neil Walkmore has graciously given the group, the Patton Cabin and the Carter House, where there'll be their, uh, base camp will be over there. The interviews will be in that, uh, in the Patton Cabin in the back there. Uh, we would probably be including one or two of y'all to represent as officials and who, uh, please, if, you know, if you could sort of set aside some time on the twenty-ninth, uh, of that day, uh, to, to do this. You may be called on different times as a part of the tours or different things that we're doing with, uh, you know, agritourism is really becoming very big for our, our county. Everything, the black areas to do various, now the hollows to pick in. Uh, so it's, uh, it's very important to proceed more and more of that. People, even coming through, we had a couple last week stopped here, uh, with their motor home, they were from the state, west of Texas. But anyway, they were coming through and they're gonna see two things, all their trees that they knew about, and they wanted to know if anybody was picking peanuts. They've never seen, they don't know how peanuts came about, where they came from, they bought them in the yards, they wanted to see how that, and they heard that before, but right now, they were picking peanuts, so... They got to see that out, Phil Garcia was digging peanuts. Uh, but this is a very, very important, uh, event for us. And one of the other things, as I spoke to the city last, uh, month, if you know the places around the county, uh, that, uh, you're charged with sort of equal treatment, whatever, we can really make sure things, uh, look really great during, during that time, that, that we don't have trash. And by the way, y'all have done a great job with, uh, the county, also really, really looks good now. Uh, personally, good company, but, um, another thing is we have the Christmas parade beginning December sixth, being followed by the tree lighting and other events, uh, on the court out square. We do like to reserve this area, uh, for that. That day, that's the same day of the week that has been held professionally for years. Uh, we are, we'll need the parking lot blocked off, no parking in the parking lot here in the parade, uh, afterwards. Um, the annex, that y'all, uh, the annex out there, uh, we have, it's been, it's been, it's been, that is now complete. Uh, and thank you for everything you did to help to get that back, uh, uh, to better than pre-Canadian days. Uh, and we are planning to have an open house on, but right now it's scheduled by December the third, uh, at five P M. Uh, just for the time that people can come out and see what wiregrass now is, and how the, uh, what was done for parade and the different places out there, that utilize that facility. Uh, we do have a nice sized warehouse in the back that is now available for event. And you need, if you haven't seen it, I'd encourage you to go out there and see it, or at least be with us on December third. Um, today, you're, you won't be able to be there, but at ten thirty, we are having a open house replicating out at the new P Camp community facility that Pat Seabill, which is, uh, in excess of an eight hundred thousand dollar investment in our community. And, uh, so they're gonna do a tour out there today at ten thirty. Check, check people around, that's the only day we could schedule it. Um, one last thing that I was, uh, just wanted to throw out there, uh, from the chamber, you know, when this courthouse was built and landscaped, I mean, moved to go, I'll just... But anyway, um, the landscape, uh, is beginning to show the age of that time. And, uh, what I'm asking is if the Chamber could maybe take that on as a project with you and look at a landscape company or somebody that could give us a price on redoing much of the, the green or the box plants, is maybe what I'm talking about. And then we, whatever the price is, that we can help toward, putting it together a plan to maybe raise money to, had care of something like that. But to upgrade our, uh, that period, if you keep it trimmed, you keep it all that, but if they are old plants, they, they should have had age, so... But if they, if that is a possibility, just let us know with, with...
I think it's, it's up as well, for exploring, so... We've kind of talked about it, but we haven't, haven't jumped or tackled it yet.
Well, we just talked about it, there's a couple companies maybe putting together a plan, and then we've got quite a few. Sometimes there's things you can do in stages, so, anyway, thanks for your time.
Appreciate it. All right. All right, and that will bring us to, uh, four A, that Georgia Forestry Group, and Jason, introduce everybody to us, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah, I appreciate y'all getting me on the agenda, I was late. It was my fault completely. Uh, a while back, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, y'all were involved in, in helping, uh, get together maybe a list of communities and different things like that to, to put this plan together. Uh, this is Mr. Willard Fayle, he is a specialist, he's retired from the Georgia Forestry Commission and hired on as a Community Wild, Wildfire Protection Specialist. And, uh, he'll explain, he's got, he's got a copy of the completed plan and he'll explain more about it.
Okay, uh, Community Wildfire, um, Community Wildfire Protection Plans have been around for about ten years. Uh, the healthy, the U S Forest Service in two thousand and three, uh, the Federal Enabling Legislation for Funding for Forest Service recommended that these Community Wildfire Protection Plans be developed in, uh, a lot of rural counties, there are communities that could be impacted by forest fires. Uh, one of the carrots that they have dangled in front of us towards getting established was the availability of grants for wildland urban issues. And it's hope, our hope that by having these plans run in each of the rural counties in Georgia, that may enable us access to further grant funding for rural fire departments. Uh, Community Wildfire Protection Plan primarily looks at what's called the Wildland Urban Interface, which is where homes or businesses or other infrastructure may be threatened by wildfire ignition. Three things are, are required in the plan, a minimum of three things, and one is local participation is probably the most important thing. And we had, uh, about a year ago started meeting, we met with Fish and Wildlife, local fire departments, I think the county administrator was met with us too. And we discussed what some of the issues were that they saw here in Lanier County that might impact, um, structural safety from wildfire and also address response from emergency agencies too. Because you're not dealing primarily with private landowners, we're not, you know, we don't have a national forest, we got a little bit of fish and wildlife land. Primarily private landowners is largely an educational document. And it's our hope that we can interest private landowners and private homeowners here in Lanier County to take some measures to make their house a little bit, we use the term firewise, in other words, be able to withstand the effects of a wildfire. You remember back in two thousand and seven, just not too far from here, we had a, lost about sixteen homes that happened, you know, almost instant, you know, within an hour of the ignition of the fire before there could be a lot of response. So the safety of these homes a lot depends on what the homeowners do to make their home more resistant. And if you have a large fire, there's only a limited number of fire trucks in, in any area. And so you may, what you do around your house may determine whether that house burns or not. But anyhow, we have, I do want to thank the fire chief and county administrator, Fish and Wildlife, everybody that participated with helping us to develop it. Uh, nothing in the plan is binding on anybody, it's largely just a set of suggestions. The one thing that I would hope would come out of the plan, and it's a recommendation that we made, that the various agencies that have a dog in this fight, you know, Fish and Wildlife, local fire departments, emergency management, forestry commission, get together periodically, maybe once a year, and kind of review any issues that might develop here in Lanier County. And, you know, make some suggestions for that. Again, thank you for giving me this time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you very much.
Uh, I can bring it here, the fire department, maybe take the lead with this and maybe...
Thank you very much, please.
I mean, well, in May, maybe we, uh, review this, and I thought it'd be...
Well, I mean, it's been a while back since we started all that. I'd have to go through it myself, just kind of give it through, through the, provide your eyes and stuff with it again. But it, it was basically the, the hazards in our area, um, like you said, uh...
So what I was saying, people say maybe once a year we kind of review this and put it front center and maybe some time of the year that wildfires might be, you know, more common, and I would think...
Yeah, we're, we're in our fire season starting right now, so, you know, running through February, March, summer, run March. February's usually the headiest, everybody's burning their woods off and stuff. Yeah, that, that's correct, I mean, it's always something you gotta look at, and, and basically it's just, uh, get people to be a little more aware. I think what he was talking about was over there in Kings County, all the houses burnt, so, I mean, there was, there was some of them down there, they'd feed the wood, look right to the back doorstep. I mean, you gotta think about that when you're, you know, building. Activities for October, fire department answered twenty-one calls, five of those twenty-one calls were EMS calls. Uh, the county had seventeen up to twenty-one, and seven of the seventeen paid, but the county's pay it one thousand five hundred and ten. As far as vehicle repairs, everything's good there. Uh, things are going on. The, uh, the truck that we traded for, uh, remember we did this truck swap? I almost got that truck in service, I'm hoping by the end of the week. It's had the pump repacked, uh, some bodywork done on it for just cosmetic reasons. And, uh, and now I'm getting the, uh, engine injectors cleaned in it, so it crank a little better. But, uh, it's pretty much well, ready to go into service. We're gonna wind up, I'm gonna guess we're gonna wind up with about thirty-five hundred dollars out of that truck. Which is, a good truck, lasts us a good long time, so... If we do get, wind up getting something from Forest Street, so we can, we can move that truck somewhere, or I'm well within the, the limit of what it was evaluated at, so we can sell it, get our money back. Yeah, but anyway, it's, it's a no lose situation. If we had, if we got new trucks and sold it, would we get our money back? And if we have to use it, it's a good truck to keep, you know, in the county as well. But that'll be, hopefully by the end of the week. Um, something the Lakeland Fire Department's doing, y'all know we opened the bike trail in here. Could be a possibility, somebody on a bike getting in the back of that trail, get hurt, fall, break a leg, so... Getting them out of there is gonna be an issue. So what we're looking to do, and they make a, a transport stretcher that has a single united wheel, which is for that kind of stuff, where you go into a wooded area and load a person and walk them out with it. So, uh, the Lakeland Fire Department has decided they're gonna use their fundraiser money and buy one of those, be at no cost to the city or county. And we'll have it along with our other rescue equipment, and that way EMS calls, say, hey, we got one in the woods, we'll go get it, you know, help them out, get them out of there, so... That's something they're planning to do. And the only other thing is, uh, the station we've been talking about is seven blocks, and one of you would talk to Mr. Copley, I can't seem to get anything out of him. If we can get a piece of land, we can, I mean, my budget would allow to be working along and along on this. But we don't need to put a lot of money in it, from what I, from what I can see, this station's gonna be a substation for Lakeland. So it's not gonna need a training area and all that, and a bathroom, and so basically, we just need to build and house a truck. So we're not gonna spend a lot of money, and it don't have to be a big old fancy building, it just needs to be a nice little metal building, you know, and, I mean, we do that kind of buildings for three or four thousand dollars. It may be the fact, I mean, but, uh, that's pretty simple, but they get length.
Well, I think I did commit to calling him and talking about that, and I didn't do it. I did talk to him last week, but that didn't come up.
I can't, I haven't had my talk, now I can't seem to get anything out of him, so, I don't know, I mean...
I will call him.
Call him and say, hey, we kind of like to move forward, just to guard the land, I mean, and we don't need a big piece, I mean, a quarter acre, do it, I mean, so we're not gonna put a... We're not gonna put a second tank and all on it, I mean, we don't need an acre of land, all we need is a, just your spot. But y'all could, uh, y'all can handle that, let me know something, I'd be glad to move forward and that for myself.
And I'll follow that up.
You have a question for you, on that, that location, your, your intentions, once we get the land or wherever, we put the substation there? Uh, what's your intentions for just putting a pumper and a brush light for it?
There'll be, uh, all I actually need there is a pumper, a class A, that's mandated by the state for it to be a certified station. The class A pumper there is always, always required, and the fireman live, I got a fireman living right there, you know, and I can get another one in that area. And, uh, well, actually, I do have two in that area. So, um, basically, I, I got everything in place, just get the truck there, and it can get certified by the state, and we can pick up all them people on the south end of their entrance, and get them back in the night. That'd just be one area, I got some more areas, but I don't know what we're gonna do, we just work on it, it's all we can do, just work on along and along. Like out the one twenty-two east area, everybody out there is back in a team. And that we do right now, we gotta get a station a bit closer to them, and I don't know what we do there.
Question, how do you inspect the fire trucks, though? There's, somebody bugged me something about some inspections of the fire truck, make sure they're up to date, you know, off the fire, about the right...
Oh, the D O T inspection?
Whatever D O T do.
Yeah, we do, uh, we started a D O T inspection on the trucks, um, after the incident with, with North there. Um, and basically, we started not only to check the trucks initially, but to, uh, create a paper truck. Cause that truck, that paper truck, they had nothing on it, no paper trail, no repairs. Um, the D O T, I try to do every year, sometimes it runs over, but the trucks are such low mileage, they'll, you know, they're not running up down highly constantly. And all he does is check lights, tires, and brakes. Um, the tires and the lights are checked by a car, so that steps up, all it is is the brakes. Well, you ain't putting five hundred miles a year on a truck, that's right, it ain't much to have good brakes, I mean, they're air brakes, and all they bake and do is wear them down. And we don't wear them down in five hundred miles, so, you know, as far as the air, air brakes stay there themselves, you move the air, it stops, you don't move it, then it's sick, so, you know, it's kind of self, self...
Did that have to be, in fact, in the earlier or...
Yeah, we try to do it once a year, I think they're all due now, but, uh, I don't know if I get them done by the end of this year or first of May. But you have to make an appointment with the guy, and he has to come over here with his truck, his own station, the station, otherwise you gotta drive every truck, the wrench down to it. So I try to get it where he can, get him a day, he can take his service truck and go to all my stations and check all my trucks. So, you know, working out a schedule with him is, is a thing.
Think you can get it for the end of the year?
Save all that fuel, you know?
Think you can get it for the end of the year?
Uh, it's possible, yeah, I'm just trying to, I have to call Damon City, City.
I might, I'll be setting this thing, but I'll be setting more than that for this.
We're getting into the, the holidays, I don't know what his schedule is, but I'll be, we can talk about it.
So, hang on, one last question for the fire department. Yeah, I noticed they put up the fence, which is good thing on the park, uh, the fishing pond and the, and the helipad. My, my question is, uh, would H C's have a key to that fence?
Uh, the gates. The gate and the pad, and the gate next to the pad, we have the key to that, the fire department. The other gates, I don't know. I don't know who has those keys. But I do have, if, if you bring up that, I'm gonna bring up another issue I got going on, that I, which I think I can hand up to the city. Uh, they're putting in a new lift station behind the station. That, that project calls for a forty by forty fence around that station, and it's gonna cut me off from having access to the back of my station now, so I can't have that fence. So, if I run into a problem with the city, I'm gonna have to come back to y'all, cause y'all actually own the property. You know, all that's, all that property's owned by the park, I know, the development park, so...
Exactly, we should have a key.
I gotta have a smaller fence to allow me still access around my shelters to get behind my station.
So, so, since you brought that up, has the city talked to you about where they're gonna put that fence for the lift station? Have they been in any sit-down discussions, saying, hey, we need to not put the fence here, or go here?
Well, the fence, that they put up already, um, was decided by the mayor, and he asked me about it, and I said, well, if you're gonna come up here, hook it to the back of my station and go... And I said, when you get to the pad, you gotta stay out and away from that pad as far as you can, you know, not to crowd the helicopter, so, they, that's what I, that's as much as I told them, the rest of it, they decided, and they put it up. So it was to keep, it was to keep people out of harm's reach, that's what we hate to put out there.
And I agree, keep people out of harm, harm for safety reasons and...
Right.
...pulpit, and however, we gotta look at the safety reasons for the helipad.
Right.
Make sure the fence is done, right?
Yeah, uh, we had a helicopter land there already, and he said, really, the one, the big issue, the fence being fifty feet away like that, it's supposed to be a hundred feet, but for them, they said, not really a big problem. But, um, the only problem is, he's cutting me off, my access to the back of my building from that direction, he's cutting me off.
So...
If I need to get to the back of my building and load that generator or something, I can't get a vehicle back there if they put this other fence, so...
So if they put a fence there, they need to put a gate there.
Right, so even, even with the gate, I can't, I can't...
Can't get in there?
What it is, the pond, the pond comes so close to the building, there's no, there's no land to drive on it.
So make it any...
It's just walking room, is all it is. So he's cutting me off there, so I'm gonna have to come between my two shelters to get behind my building, and they put a second fence up? I'm cut off completely, and I didn't have that.
But that needs to be discussed with the county, and this is county property, so they can just put something up without discussing with the county.
Well, you're right, the county owns that pond and everything around it, so, I mean, they own the station, they own all of it, so, you know. And they, the mayor's decision to put up a fence to keep people from fishing.
I don't have a problem with that, but when it comes to obstructing the fire department to do their business, that's county business.
Well, I'm gonna bring it up at the meeting tonight and ask them something, I'm gonna have to work with that company that they're doing that, get that fence down, cause even Billy with the water source, so that they could get out of a smaller camp. But of course, we'll be contracting something, and the plan calls for this, that's what they expect you to do, so I don't know what's going on, but if I have to come back to y'all, I will.
Please do.
But we, we can't, we can't let them cut me off, I gotta even be able to drive back there. And I'd like to put my shelter back, back there too, to put my boats under, you know, we had a rescue boat shelter, now it's down on the other end, and I don't wanna leave it down there. But anyhow, we'll get back to that.
Anybody else?
Bob, you're on Hillson. Put down the road, Bob. Yeah, good morning, y'all. So, basically, just to keep the road maintained as usual, and, uh, Glenn, this county rider wave is on a paved road that we have, can keep maintaining, keep, uh, shut down for the year. All the issue with roughed the grass and the seed that we changed, Jeff has still got the solder on board, uh, rolling in here, we change it running, that one, um, probably at least at the end of this month. And, uh, had the issue with, with, uh, that truck, they're gonna take care of it itself, but the bomb will forget back in there. Uh, another issue on these dry road beds, I know you got a few calls on, but, you know, the issue with these beds, just gets dry. We haven't been able to do anything with, did get started back up here last week, or moved some of this sand around, and you can grade it. Fill the washboards up, track the oil in three or four days, and it's back the same way. It's just the issue of dry road bed, won't let it mount, and rain is, uh, wasn't the tape to get it put back out again. Basically, we just, we're just beating, uh, beating ourselves up on them, we did not grade it for two weeks. Uh, Bering Canyon's put it graded, Mounds Canyon's part's has put it graded, uh, the road bed is just too dry, and what you do, when you do tawd, you grade them and smooth them out. You're basically breaking that hurricane up, and you'll, you'll break, looks like a sheet, it looks like slate, and they're just pushing the whole road, there'll be a sheet of nothing but hardened dirt. And then you, the road bed itself is going when the hurricane is there. But we've gotten off of those for, like, except for two weeks, and, but we've had some other issues in the county, uh, as far as building roads up and pipe issue, and we've got some Michigan, it's a pit, and we're getting ready whenever the, uh, time changes, and we can get in there, the stuff out, you know, the pit down there, or this issue we have down there, the new ground guy. And basically, that's about it, unless you want to have any questions. And basically, that's about it, unless you wanna have any questions.
You talked to him about, what were you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where they want-
Just on some of those-
The great tree coming off the river road, or?
Just in, they've got some issues where some handicap, um, houses are around there, and they're having a bunch of fast, uh, speed, speeders coming through there, um, I could try to get either roads that they were asking about.
Okay, yeah, fine, we can, um, okay, that issue with speeders, call the sheriff department, I mean, that's what it was, we can put-
They did, sheriff-
But they, they still speak, cause we had the issue over in, uh, Biff Pond Saturday, and, um, Miff Pond Saturday, we put them up, and they still speak.
They did, they called the sheriff, and he told them he needed to talk to us.
I'm not track control, I can put, he must say. But, uh, we, we, we can try to slow them down, we can find out which road you want them on, and everything about quarterly, that'd be no big problem.
All right, then, any others?
All right, thanks, Bob, uh, John, you got a report?
Last month, we had a fifty-six call, picked up nineteen animals, had, uh, two livestock at Lawrence out, and, um, contract ready? And, what about the contract?
That's what I was saying, I think, I think we're gonna put some habits out here today, for the need, but, have to get it.
All right, um- Yep, Fran, you got EMS?
Yes, we had ninety calls for October, sixty-two of those were in the city limits, they're after discovered throughout the county. We called each lady in five times, and we went to assist other counties four times. We transported a total of sixty-nine patients, um, we have an opportunity for another EMT class that'll be funded by Wiregrass. I brought you a flyer, kind of advertising that. Mr. Copeland has worked with Wiregrass and secured a grant for Linder County. I told him, the good thing about it is, we, we always need the money, but the bad thing is, we're a year behind, so we didn't finish with the class now. But if anybody, you know, in the county that wants to take it, it's open to you, just to call that number and get your name on the list for, for tender register. I've got to turn the list in to them and follow Wiregrass's rules on this class.
So, this is one you just finishing up?
No, sir, this is a new one, it'll start in January.
That's why I was like, is it the same kind of training?
It's the same type of training, but were you paid for the books and everything on the last class? My understanding is, they're paying for everything on this one. Also, um, every vehicle with EMS is owned by the county now, all our offices and the EMS director's truck. The reason for that is, with our cross-training with the fire department and these EMTs that are coming out, is they are county employees by law, by regulation, so they are volunteer firefighters. The ones that are not volunteer firefighters are hospital employees, so they're covered. I just wanted to bring, bring that to your, uh, memory, that the trucks are owned by the county, and if we get everything going like we want to, and have a backup, when the fire department comes, they're giving a county vehicle, enrolling the county-owned and insured vehicle. There've been some questions about that, I just wanted to make sure y'all understand, you own the trucks. And, the, I checked with the administrator yesterday, I talked with Donna some of the rules for trying to switch over to do our billing as a near county EMS, as a county-owned, and it's, there was some concern that maybe I was stepping out of bounds a little bit with the hospitals. I checked with the administrator yesterday, and he said, I don't know what he asked me to do. So, don't offer anything, every time somebody hears a rumor or hears something, they throw up, but that's not the way SGMC does it. Where SGMC is owned by SGMC, your ambulance service is owned by you, so we don't play by the same rules, we're not run the same way. And they have a hard time sometimes understanding that, that they own their ambulance service, SGMC owns the ambulance service they operate. That they have to abide by rules and regulations for hospital-based ambulance services. I checked with the state EMS director and everybody in between, you pay for the license for the near county EMS, you own the ambulance service, you own the trucks, it's your ambulance service, we can legally bill as the near EMS and create more revenue, because they pay different to a county-based service than the, to a hospital-based service. And anywhere I go, it's always brought up, that you're still billing under hospitals, and I, yeah, I understand that, but that's crazy, you're losing a lot of money. Yes, I understand that, so we are on that line to get it switched over. Donna, I've been talking with her, I've got what we have to do, we have to open an account at the bank as Linder County EMS. And then however you do, who writes checks, or whatever, it's your account, it's your doings, it's, it's your account. The payments will be deposited by electronic funds to that account. And then, my thought, and y'all the boss, whatever y'all want to do in the hospital, but my thought was, the hospital will bill you every month for the operating expense for the salaries, and then just pay them out of that account for, for their expense. That might work, it might not, that's why you're the commissioners, you decide what you wanna do, but just to make sure that we're on the same page, I checked with Neil yesterday, and explained to him what I was trying to do, and I said, am I out of line? He does not want me to sign a contract with this company, and rightfully so, I'm not the person to sign the contract. So, everything getting prepared for is in, in progress, when it gets time to sign the contract, of course, that would be you to sign the contracts, not me.
But, and since you're on that topic about contracts and hospital and everything, you know, what we need to do, a member of the hospital board called me last week or two weeks ago, wanted us to maybe have a, a work session, talking about all this stuff again, and I suggested maybe we do it Thursday, but being this week so short, it might, next Monday afternoon, is that? I mean, that would give you some more time to talk, to talk to Neil, and to get everybody's thoughts together, and come back and-
My thought is, we all need to get in the same room at the same time at the same place, and-
That's what I'm suggesting, we do it here. And I'm, I'm suggesting next Monday at five, unless y'all wanna go ahead and have the Thursday, but I figured Monday would give us enough time.
Might be five thirty, Samuel?
Five thirty or six, or-
Every time you do it.
Five thirty, huh? Uh, that was gonna be your whole business, but we'll go ahead and-
Another contract I'm talking about is with EMS consultants, I don't know anything about the contract, as far as the work or anything on the other contract. The contract with EMS consultants, they're the ones that I've been dealing with that would switch us from hospital-based billing to county-based billing, and handle our billing for us, kind of percent of the collections, not the percent of the bill.
It's all, everything involving EMS, so the work session would be appropriate, and we can all get through and, uh, you know, and maybe we'll, and by the season, we can, we can, um-
Can I make a comment about the landscape?
Sure.
Just a thought, the high school has a horticulture class, and Mr. Tim Reagan is, does an excellent job with it.
Mr. Reagan's not-
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say Reagan, I meant to say Colpepper, I'm sorry.
I guess the older you get, the more often you do stuff like that.
Just don't talk about it.
Mr. Colpepper has an awesome class, and, uh, why not get him involved in it, I can buy the plant for you wholesale, and not try to make any money off the county, if we're gonna make it look better, do it as a community project, maybe let community service people do the planting. And, you know, instead of letting companies come in and bid it, the money goes out, let's use our own folks, let it be a project for the school to maybe have a competition and design a landscape with that class or something.
That's a good idea, um, uh, would you mind working with Sandy on that?
No, I don't mind, I just-
I think, I think that's, he was gonna have the chamber involved, but maybe, what we do on that, that's a good idea, that's a great idea, but, I think, I'd get some community involved, and pride, and people excited about projects here, and stuff, that'd be good.
Yes, sir. Chairman, since we're talking about contracts, you got a work session next Monday, the nineteenth, remember? I would like to, if you can, get the animal control contract prepared, so we maybe can sign it at that meeting, cause-
Contract, yes.
It's prepared, or?
Prepared, yes.
Okay, so I'll need to sign it, I like to sign it before I leave December, it's my last meeting, so, if you can, please, have it moving.
I think that's easy, we can maybe get it done this week, I mean, so we've already adopted it, but-
Right, we adopted the contract, and just need to sign it to be official, and that'd be my last official meeting, I guess, for December.
Anybody else? All right, bring us, uh, Mr. Goldwood Parks Recreation?
Activities for the month of October at the recreation department were dance class, flag football, tackle football, all age groups, cheerleading, soccer, and karate. If I also may piggyback on what Fire Chief Young was talking about, about the fence, we also need access to the backside of the field. You know, major gate in case we need to service lights, scoreboard, that kind of thing, without having to drive down center field.
On our behalf, we'll, uh, do that work out. Anybody else? Uh, John, what do you think, you for example, if you'd stay with us, still, is there? All right, out of number six would be, uh, annual loss for family connections. Good morning, welcome.
See, some of the things that we did for the month of October, um, with our child abuse and neglecting, um, well, I went, attended child vitality review training in White Cross, and what that is, is there's a committee that meets any time that a child dies in Linder County, and what we do is review if there were any, um, preventative measures we could take in the county. Um, now, we were told that those are supposed to be at least within thirty days of a child dying, and we have still not had one for, um, the death this past August, I believe, where it was, um, stat. Um, that's all done by your D A. Um, Red Ribbon Week, we, um, provided little Red Ribbon Week suckers that went inside all PB and J bags for the barberies of the meeting. Um, Kids Fest was held at Barber Road, um, we only, uh, we did advertise this in the newspaper, but the main place of advertising was the PB and J bags for the county, because we really did focus that towards Barber Road, and, um, we were able to give out that day a hundred, um, coats to kids. Um, the main thing I wanted to discuss with you was our Barber Road forum that we had on November day. Um, we thank Mr. Simpson for coming out. This, um, forum again was just for the community that lives out at Barber Road, um, targeted the same way that we do all the others. We had met with them a year before, and so we went back again, um, when we met with them before, we were number one for the, um, state in Linder County, and they were number one in Linder County, so we were able to go back, so we're now number twenty-six, but you're still number one. So, we looked at the things that they have brought to our attention the last time, and to see if anything had changed, and that's what I have listed here, um, for you. We asked them last time and this time, why they believed Barber Road was number one in child abuse and neglect, that area. Um, that area really starts at about Boyes on that, the Walker's Park, and they said ninety percent of the problem was Big Ben, that one, um, street there. Um, isolation was another thing they brought up, um, vandalism, they said there was a lot of vandalism, breaking into empty trailers. Um, they told us there were gangs there, kids hang together late at night, and are raving themselves. Um, in this, they brought up that you can see, and we spoke with West Side Fire Department who agreed on this, you can see anywhere between, um, fifteen to twenty kids at one time between twelve and three o'clock in the morning, grouped together, and sometimes at the, you know, around, um, fire departments or just out around these trailers. Um, and it was brought to my attention the next, no, the same night we were there, ten forty-five, that night, they had someone break into a trailer. One of the community members called me the next day and told me, um, mental health issues, and parents are educated on discipline. We asked them what the most important thing they wanted as a community for us to try to help them to go back to their next steps. They asked for more law enforcement presence, they said that it had stepped up since the last time we were there, but they wanted to see more. They wanted, um, law enforcement engagement within the community, um, what they meant by that was, um, just not necessarily a ride through, but that you actually knew the people who lived out there, um, especially with the kids, and we brought up, when a PB and J van rides through there and you stop, about seventy-five kids run to you, so there is opportunity to engage with that community if you're actually out there and attend it. Um, we have a real big problem getting, um, engagement from, getting the people in that community to come to any kind of trainings that we have, which is typical, so the group decided to ha- ask to have more of a block party style, um, a cookout out there, where they could come, the people would come, we would feed them, and give them the information that they needed, and engage for them to get to make it better. Um, they, they asked that we have all of our CPPC meetings, that we start holding them in the Barber Road subdivision, which made a great, was a great suggestion, so that more can attend. Um, a curfew needed and enforced, and that's a question that I have for y'all, if there is a curfew.
That's a good question, I was thinking, what's the Georgia law state, I don't know it, but it's something we need to look up.
Um, they asked for court, curfew, and they asked for it being enforced, um, they also asked, um, for a neighborhood watch, um, to help that be implemented. So, these are, um, in the sheriff's office defense, we have not discussed that with them yet, and, um, all things that they wanna be a part of in a meeting together, um, with them. Anyway, and him, thank you, Mr. Simpson, for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess on the curfew, John, I mean, that would be, I think, I think it is.
At one point, I was told it was twelve, but I, I don't know if that's true, but, I mean, if there was a curfew, then ride through there and send that many kids out, um, that's inadequate supervision right there. I mean, it, that's something that, that could be done, that, um, and Mr. Simpson can, um, he's there to hear that.
Needs to be the, I don't, I don't know how you do it for one part, you'd have to do it countywide.
Oh, yeah, you would have to do it countywide, but I would think that that is your largest area of where it's happening the most. And, um, majority of those people that were there for the meeting this time and last, said that most people out there are scared to report anything. Um, I even had the fire department, West Side Fire Department, tell me that one time they were riding back there at night, and had a line come in front of them, daring them to, to move, so it's, um, it's not a friendly place to be.
Not even parents out there and taking the possibility.
And, um, that one area, um, working on that one area can change so much, just one little road back there makes a whole diff- makes a big difference in a lot of things in Linder.
Well, the big thing, like-
Oh, when you get them far apart.
That's one way in, one way out, road, it's gonna be, it's gonna law, and they can get out.
They gotta have law there.
It makes, that makes complete sense, and that's what I don't understand, cause it's- seems to be right there, it's right there for you.
Last, last month, the children from that area, Big Pin Circle, set the grill, their truck on fire and there was another fire, it was two fires there last month on Big Pin Circle.
I think, I think the, I think Big Pin Circle now is the one going in there and causing it, I think the problem and all is coming with that family units and all of that, which is behind Big Pin Circle. Big Pin Circle is a county-maintained road.
It is still, oh, it's still county though.
Yeah, but what I'm saying though, is that they've, they've put it as Big Pin Circle, which is not Big Pin Circle. Those people on Big Pin Circle are individual lot owners. They don't, there's not that many kids up in that front part of the section there. This is coming in.